Everybody watching, uh, two minutes. I'm gonna call this planning commission meeting for Monday, December 5th, 2022 to order. Alright, so we gotta take care of some housekeeping stuff. Staff, can we please confirm the following in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act? A copy of the agenda was sent to the news media persons requesting notification and posted on the bulletin board in the county administration building. Is that correct?
It is correct.
Alright. Ladies and gentlemen, as a reminder, the planning commission makes recommendations to county council as to whether to approve or deny zoning map amendments. County council will conduct its own public hearing and take official votes to approve or deny map amendments on a future date published by the county. County typical typically holds zoning public hearings on the fourth Tuesday of the month. So please check the county's website for updated agendas, dates, and times. Please note some of the following guidelines for today. Please turn off any cell phones or pagers if we still have them. Audience members may quietly come and go as needed. Any applicants or anybody talking are allowed up to two minutes to make statements. Citizens signed up to speak are allowed only two minutes. Redundant comments should be minimized. Only addressed remarks to the commission do not expect the commission to respond to questions from the speaker in a back and forth style. That is not the purpose of this meeting. Please no audience and speaker exchanges. No audience demonstrations or other disruptions to the meeting are permitted, nor are comments from other, from anyone other than the speaker at the podium. Please remember this meeting is being recorded. Please speak into the microphone and give your name and address. Abusive language is inappropriate and will not be tolerated. Please don't voice displeasure or frustration at the recommendation while the planning commission is still conducting business. If you have any questions or concerns, you may contact the Ritzland County Planning Department staff. Alright, so that got us through, uh, one and two of the agenda. Now we're moving on to item number three, the special election per section two of our planning commission rules of procedure. Those of you out there wondering, we instituted a rule that if we were having a officer vacate a spot, we would have a special election to fill that spot. So also at the end of this meeting, we will be holding elections for our new officers that will, that take immediately effect for the new year. So I prepared a little statement to kinda walk through a few things. Alright, so the special election per section two of the planning commission rules of procedures. We can hold an election to have a chair present for just this meeting and the last, which is the last meeting of the calendar year. The person voted in the chair would not conduct a meeting, but just fill in the spot in case the vice chair has to become sick during this meeting or not able to finish the meeting that the vice chair is called to order. If we go this route, we would also need to make a motion to have the new acting chair lead the meeting or not make a motion and the person who called the meeting to order would then finish this meeting. We can suspend the rule. This may take precedence over any other motion that we have in front of us. The only reason why this rule can be suspended is simple in Robert's rules. If we were to elect someone to the chair position, they would not be acting as the chair until the next meeting. Our next meeting is scheduled for February, and if we do have a meeting in January, we would have already elected new officers at the end of this meeting for the calendar year. As vice chair and acting chair for this meeting, this could not have been pulled from the agenda without the whole commission to decide a way forward because it is a rule of procedure. The vice chair believes we are all equal members of this commission. So the vice chair wanted the commission to make the decision moving forward and put it to a vote. This will require two thirds vote if we suspend the rule. This is only allowable because we have an election at the end of this meeting to elect new officers for the 2023 year, as this is our last meeting for this year. If we had scheduled another meeting in December, we would have to hold a special election today, but since we do not, the suspension of this rule would be made whole again with the election at the end of the meeting for our new officers overall. Now, as far as moving forward, it is up to the will of the commission on what you guys wanna do. I'm fine with anything. I just wanted to be known that there are some multiple routes. We can either elect a new chair or we can suspend and hold the actual elections for the new officers at the end. Uh, if we do that, then what we should do is whoever is being voted on for chair, you tack on to make that effective immediately. So therefore they would be there just in case if something did come up and we would have a chair and a vice chair sitting until one January. And on one January, they would assume their natural role also. Or we can have two separate elections. So I mean, it's kinda up to you guys.
Vice?
Yes, sir.
Sriyanka. Does that all sound right? Can we do that where, uh?
I'm gonna defer to our Paul Materian.
Hi, my name is, uh, Mr. Vice Chair, may I speak?
Yes, sir.
Uh, my name is Patrick Wright, the county attorney. If you choose to have the special election and elect a, a new chair at this point, you can, basically they would chair, the only meeting left is this meeting for this year. So basically you can either allow the current vice chair who began the meeting to continue or you can, um, once elections take place, allow the new person who was elected chair to take over for the rest of this meeting. And, but once you have the elections at the end of this meeting, whoever the, those people are that are the new officers that they take over next year, uh, once they, once you have your next meeting, basically. So this, you can do the special election. So basically for all extensive purposes, the chair, if you, unless you allow the vice chair to continue for the rest of this meeting, they would be the chair for this meeting. And that, that's basically all it would be is that they would, uh, chair the rest of this meeting if you so choose. Until the elections happen at the end of this meeting and then the next meeting, the new people would take over.
Thank you, uh, Vice?
Sriyanka.
Unless there's any other discussion, I like to look at our rules. Uh, section four for the vice chair. It says the vice chairman shall exercise the duties of the chairman in the absence, disability, or disqualification of a chair in the absence the chair and vice chairman or acting chairman shall be appointed by the members. Uh, I feel like for this meeting, our vice chair can get us through it and we can suspend the rule. I'd be happy to hear from the commission or second any motions to suspend. Motion to suspend then.
Alright, there's a motion on the floor to suspend the rule and second.
The second, Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Johnson.
We have a motion on the floor to suspend the rule, um, for the special election for the chair. Um, those in favor, um, Dennis.
Aye.
Yonki.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fryerson.
Aye.
Metz.
Aye.
Durant.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Serks.
Aye.
Alright, emotion passes.
Motion passes and we'll move on to item four additions or deletions to the agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions?
No, sir.
Alright, so moving on, we're gonna go to the approval of minutes for six June 2022 and September 8th, 2022. Uh, staff, I do have a question before we move on to the approval of the minutes. Um, these minutes that we have in front of us, the six June 2022 work session, I thought we voted on those at the last meeting when I was looking over everything. I thought it was the regular meeting that we needed the minutes for.
Did you get this? What, the ones that you received was there for this?
Ones in our packet was for the work session and not the regular meeting.
We can, I can go back and look at that, um. Let me look at that. I'll confirm, but if you want to, if you don't mind, you could just approve the September. Um, and hopefully maybe by the end of the meeting, I'll have some confirmation on which ones. You'll come. Or you could just defer this until the end of the meeting.
Alright, um, we can either have a motion to approve the September 8th meeting and then defer the six June meeting to the end of this, uh, meeting also. Do we have a motion on that?
Mr. Vice Chair.
Yes, sir. Um, you're recognized, sir.
Move to, um, uh, approve the minutes of the September meeting and wait on the June meeting until either later this meeting or whenever they're available.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, we have a motion on the floor and it's properly seconded. That motion would be to vote on the eighth September 2022, uh, minutes and at the end of the meeting, see if we can clarify the six June minutes.
Alright, those in favor of approval of the September 8th, 2022 minutes. Dennis.
Aye.
Yonki.
Aye.
Johnson. Fryerson.
Aye.
Metz.
Aye.
Durant.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Serks.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Alright, moving on down the meeting, we have the consent agenda items. Um, do I have a motion? Well, uh, I wanna walk y'all through this. If, real quick, if it's for disapproval, we pull them for discussion and any questions. And if we have anybody sign up, we also pull them to listen to the public and, uh, ask any questions that we may have. Right now, we currently have three that are for disapproval and then we have one for approval, but somebody has signed up to speak against case number four. So therefore it would also need to be approved. So I would need a motion, uh, to do that. And keep in mind, we do not have any road names in this package. Okay. Recognize, Mr. Yonki.
Make a motion. All map amendments, one, two, three. Question? Are no road names?
Alright, we have a motion on the floor to remove cases one through four for discussion and there's no road names to push forward. Do I have a second? Who is that? Um, and it's been seconded, Commissioner Metz.
Alright, those in favor of the motion, um, here all of the cases, um, under six B. Dennis.
Aye.
Yonki.
Aye.
Johnson. Fryerson.
Aye.
Metz. Durant.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Serks.
Aye.
Passes.
Alright, motion passes. So that moves us on to six B one. We have case number twenty-two dash zero three six MA. Up for staff.
Alright, again, the first item is case twenty-two dash zero three six MA. The applicants are Anthony and Danielle Timmons. The location is at eighty-three fifty Old Percival Road. The applicants are requesting to rezone three acres from the current zoning of RMMD, which is residential multifamily medium density to RC, which is rural commercial. Uh, staff recommends disapproval of this request. Um, and the basis for our recommendation is that it's not, um, consistent with the objectives outlined in the comprehensive plan. Um, according to the plan, commercial development or non-residential development may be considered for location along main road corridors and within a contextually appropriate distance from the intersection of our primary arterial. The subject parcel is adjacent to commercially zone and develop parcels and is located along a main road corridor, but it is not located near the intersection of our primary arterial. The proposed zoning designation would also permit uses that are inconsistent with the neighborhood scale, development pattern, um, desire within the neighborhood medium density designation of the comprehensive plan. Um, also in addition, the intent of the RC district is to serve isolated areas of the county. Um, the area around the subject location is not an isolated agricultural or rural residential district, nor are the residents located beyond the limits of service of the municipalities. For, for these reasons, staff recommends disapproval of this map amendment request.
Alright, commissioners, are there any questions for staff at this moment? Ian Nun, do we have anybody signed up for this?
Oh, Mr. Vice Chair.
Alright, so we have nobody signed up for six B one.
I believe the applicants are here and they may have missed signing in.
So?
And you're the applicant? Uh, please come to the podium. Uh, remember, state your name, address, and uh, you have two minutes.
Um, name is Anthony Timmons. Uh, the address on which I'm speaking on is eighty-three fifty Old Percival. Um, uh, we wanna purchase the land and, and the structure to bring a, a sports complex there. Um, it's, it's surrounded by neighborhoods. There's a lot of kids running through there and, uh, it'd be a great opportunity just to give them something to do through the summer. Um, I've been surrounded by basketball all my life. Uh, my sons play basketball. I do, um, kids fitness, kids training. I'm a personal trainer, so I mean, I could bring a lot of, a lot of help over to that area. And, um, the structure's been there for years abandoned. It was an old church that caught a fire. They never restored, I mean, they never did anything else to it. And, um, I would love to take it and make it into something and, and use the opportunity to help some kids that could use it. I'm, I'm actually doing it all myself. My, I'm a, I'm a general contractor. So I know people that are coming and we could put it together and I'm paying for it myself. I'm not using a bank. I'm doing it all myself and I just, I just wanna show people that you can do it. So that's all.
That is, sir. Thank you very much for your comments.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Yes, Mr. Johnson.
Quick question for staff. Looking at the chart for the adjoining uses, north, south, east, and west, M one RS three, RM RS three, but am I not reading the site correct? The map three pages back immediately to the north, that's, oh, my packet is red with GC.
Yes, yes, sir. You're, you're correct. Um, those parcels are general commercial.
That would be a higher zoning than what the applicant is requesting?
Um, yes, sir. It would be.
Do we have any other discussion? Do we have any motions?
Mr. Vice Chair, uh, one question before you go to a motion.
Alright.
I just, a question for staff. I just wanna make sure I understand clearly, uh, what's represented here. Um, looking on the map on page six, the, you have the site indicated there and immediately to its right are, um, are RC designations, is that correct?
No. No, sir. G, those will actually be GC, which is general commercial.
And got it. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, uh, question for staff. Recognize. Alright, I keep forgetting to rec, say recognize, but you're recognized.
Is, are, are there any other zoning designations where that intended use could potentially fall under that would meet the, that would be consistent with, um, with that general area?
Um, no, sir. The, the uses that would allow that use would be, I think, the rural commercials, the least intense of those zoning designations. You know, yeah, you know, a lot of times when we're looking at these things, you will come across, um, adjacent properties or properties in the area that on the way, how did those get there? You know, a lot of things have been there for years. Um, however, they would not be in compliance with the comprehensive plan either. So in this particular location, we're just looking at the rural commercial and show you um, how staff report can change to a degree. Any of the rural commercial, general commercial, or anything higher, we would still recommend it disapproval. Um, I think maybe the one difference may have been had the requests come in as a GC or as a GC's designation, for example. We may have still recommended disapproval, but we may have pointed out like a however, the adjacent properties to, um, share the same zoning request or in some cases, maybe even across the street, it feels maybe a light industrial.
Question for staff, Vice?
Recognize, Commissioner Yonki.
What's the history of this? Like this and so?
Um, according to the zoning history for this parcel, as final page one states that the with, is with the adoption of the two thousand and five land development code, the RG one zoning designation, which it was formally identified as, um, received a designation of RMMD. So it seems like this has been a residential portion for probably from the beginning.
Mr. Vice Chair, um, Mr. Yonki's question about the subject parcel, what about the two next to it that are GC? I mean, that's, can, can you give us the same?
Looks like if we, normally when we don't identify if a recent rezoning of the parcel, when I say recent, we can go back, you know, ten, fifteen years, if not more than that parcel may have already had the general commercial in place. Um, probably, probably done the adoption of zoning back, come back to seventy-eight.
Recognize, Commissioner Yonki.
I'd entertain a motion of approval based on actors that we look X. Uh, look like car lots. The right to the left, that's City of Columbia. That's why it's not highlighted. I'm curious of the smaller parcels adjacent to it. Does that, looks like a house to be there? Can't really tell.
This looks like it's a residential parcel, residential should be used and developed parcel.
I don't think that would negate my motion of approval based upon the surrounding area.
We have a motion on the floor to send to county council for approval, um, with reason. We have a motion on the floor to send to County Council for approval, um, with reasons of the surrounding area.
A second to motion.
And we have a second. Uh, it's been moved and properly seconded. Let's take a vote.
And I'll apologize, um, well, Commissioner Yonkey, but could you state again what your reasons were for going against the recommendation?
Question is other factors we look at, uh, with planning commission, one being the surround, surrounding area? Or maybe the justification or need for this type of neighborhood commercial, looking at it as if it's a blank property. Um, we have City of Columbia to the southwest. On the map, you can see it as a neighborhood. And then to the northeast, we have two partial development gets greater as you go further from that community. So asking for a neighborhood commercial makes sense to me versus him, the applicant asking for a general commercial.
But the
There's a little bit of a
Request is for, the actual request is for rural commercial, neighborhood commercial.
Thank you.
Staff, did you get that?
Did.
Okay. And Commissioner Frarson, you still second, correct?
Bet.
All right.
Okay.
We take a vote on that?
Um, yes, sir. Uh, just kind of getting my thoughts together here. So. Um. Okay. Oh. Uh, one thing, and, and again, uh, I want to make sure that, um, some kind of caught here. Uh, one, I don't want to make it seem like I'm kind of guiding you in any way. Need to point that out, but I also need to point out that there was something as, um, as we're talking that was left off of your zoning history. So I apologize for that. Where what's something that should have been included on your zoning history? Is that under case under case twenty-two dash zero three four M A, in which, uh, appeared before the planning commission, um, in November. Um, the request was also essentially just write down from this and the request was for the same request. Um, and planning commission recommended denial. So I just wanted to just to point
Which case was that, please, sir?
Where was it?
Which case was that?
It was case twenty-two dash zero three four M A.
Show it on the map.
Um, it's eight, four, four, two. Eight, four, four, two, whole person. Of course, was highlighted, um, it was this aborted by the aqua color is the property, um, that I'm referring to that you had last month. And, uh, I believe Mr. Smith has the hand on a mouse on the subject parcel.
Can you turn the layers on, please, sir? Well, Mr. Vice Chair, just the, the reason that Mr. Yonkey's rationale makes sense to me, my heartburn was with those two G Cs next door. I mean, and asking for like he'd have a stronger rationale for go for a higher zoning. They're coming in for a lower zoning. So that's why Commissioner Yonkey's rationale makes sense to me in terms of the methodology. Um, I specifically remember that case. You're coming in asking
Is there any more discussion on this? Cause we do have a motion and it has been seconded. So we will have to take a vote, but we still have the time to discuss before the vote's taken. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Vice Chair.
Recognize.
Thank you. Uh, looking at the map as it, uh, currently stands, I mean, I, um, I, I can understand the, um, desire and, and even need for the intended use, but, um, as things currently stand, I don't see that we can, uh, get this square peg into a round hole, um, of the, um, you know, but what would be appropriate under comprehensive plan? Which though we all may like to. Thank you.
Any more discussion?
Vice.
Recognize.
When in, going back to look at the one that you, uh, twenty-two dash zero three four M A, the one that was denied, was the request to go from O I to uh, R C?
Yes, it was.
Was not totally the exact same thing, correct?
Right. Also, because not so much what is going from is a matter of what is going to is what we were more for focused on.
Thank you.
Vice Chair. Oh.
Recognize.
What was it? The other parcel trying to go to?
Rural commercial. You're trying to go from O I, which is office and institutional to R C, which is rural commercial. Again, I apologize that which we just included that. I think we just probably just missed that, but there's something I thought was important enough to bring to your attention.
Right. Well, we have a motion on the floor. Let's go ahead and, uh, if there's bar and no more discussion, let's take a vote on it.
All right, um, those in favor of?
Excuse me, Mr. Vice. Good. We have Mr. Yonkey restate his motion.
Sure thing. Um, motion of approval based off of the surrounding tracks, area right next to G C. R C.
All right, let's call for the vote.
All right, uh, those in favor of approval for case twenty-two dash zero through six M A from RM MD to R C? Uh, those in favor, uh, Dennis?
Yeah.
Yonkey?
Hi.
Johnson?
Hi.
Frarson?
Hi.
Metz? Durant?
Hi.
Taylor?
Hi.
Turks?
No.
All right, motion passes five to three.
Uh, for the applicant, just remember we are recommended body. Uh, County Council will have the final approval on this. All right, moving on to case number twenty-two dash zero three seven M A. Uh, one hundred Kelly Mill.
Okay, again, no.
What you got for us?
All right. So again, we have farm requests. Uh, item twenty-two dash zero three seven M A. The applicant is Kevin Steelman. The location is one thousand Kelly Mill Road. Um, the applicant has requested a rezone a little less than fifty acres, actually forty-nine point nine eight acres from R U, which is rural district to R S E, which is residential single family estate. Um, staff recommends disapproval of this request. Um, um, being that we, in opinion of staff, that the proposed rezoning is not consistent with the objectives outlined in the comprehensive plan for this area. According to the plans, these areas are identified as a transition from neighborhood low density to more intense mixed residential, high density urban environment. Um, um, we'll point out, um, you note is of, because I was disclosing at the last case, um, you know, there's sometimes when staff is looking at these. And while we, after we state what the recommendations of the comprehensive plan are, there are some things we may point out. Um, this is interesting, um, is that however, the uses and densities allowed under the R S E district are not consistent with the recommendations of the plan. Um, however, the request would be consistent with the density in our lot area of the established and proposed developments of the adjacent subdivisions north of Kelly Mill Road, which would be two developments, which is Baymont and Crickentree. Um, Mr. Smith, if you would click on the Baymont Development, which is right in front of a road on Kelly Mill, right above that. Go to your left. No, to your, no, 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 don't move yet, right there. So that is the Baymont Development, um, which is actually zone rural. However, with the application of the open space provisions of our code, they were able to develop it with, from, but reducing the lot sizes. And the parcel, the, the, um, Crickentree subdivision, which you see kind of in the, I guess, the purple color, um, is on R S L D. However, the lot sizes, um, exceed the twelve thousand square foot minimum lot size for that district. Um, and they're more in line with the R S E as far as lot sizes, you know, going from at least, you know, twenty thousand square feet, which is the minimum for the R S E zoning designation. But again, um, based on the inconsistency of the request as it relates to the comprehensive plan, staff recommends disapproval of the map request.
All right, Commission, um, is there any questions for staff? All right, Ben Nun, uh, I do want the public to know that we did receive a letter on this, um.
Property owner.
I'm the property owner?
The property owner.
Okay, um. The commissions received, should we, uh, read this for the public or?
Um, we have it, um. We just wanted you to have it. Um, normally we only verbalize, uh, what we only allow for applicants to come in and speak, but just wanted, but if somebody sends in a letter, we will provide it to the planning commission and we'll put it in the file.
All right. So we do have people that are here signed up, correct?
Yes.
All right. If you could call those names up, uh, I just want to remind you, when you come to the podium, please say, state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
Okay, first, Mr. Vice Chair, we have the applicant, Mr. Kevin Steelman.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your time. Kevin Steelman, one twenty Harborside Circle. I'm the president of Land Tech, a residential land developer in Columbia. I'm a resident of Lake Carolina. I have lived in Lake Carolina since two thousand and three. And our company, um, was involved with the original planning and development of Lake Carolina. And I've been with the company since two thousand. And, uh, we've contracted to, to purchase this property across the, uh, uh, Kelly Mill, uh, road to the north of Lake Carolina. And, um, once we had the property under contract, you know, the first thing we did was try to evaluate the area to figure out what the proper zoning and use was for the property. And while the south of Kelly Mill is obviously the Lake Carolina P D D is a higher density, uh, everything to the west is, um, as, as Mr. Price pointed out, is R S L D, which could have been a, a, uh, 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 that was one of the uses we considered, but then as we evaluated kind of our land plan and what we, what yield we were looking for out of it, the R S E seemed more appropriate to us. It was somewhat of a transition down to a lesser zoning. If you look at the property, everything to the east and to the north is rural. Um, and you're heading into Kershaw County where, where their zoning is far more restrictive. And so generally speaking, uh, densities, I think, will, will, will lessen as you go further, uh, east on, um, Kelly Mill or north towards Langford Road. So we felt like the R S E was, was an appropriate, um, land use for the area. And it, and it's sufficient to accommodate our plans. And so, um, we made the application, uh, accordingly. So, uh, we would just ask for, uh, for your support, um, on it and, uh, just be happy to answer any questions that you have for us.
All right, sir.
Next, we have Don Sanders.
Good afternoon. I'm Don Sanders. I live in one oh seven Reunion Lane, Columbia, two nine two oh six. Uh, my purpose of being here is I represent Mr. Kennedy in the sale of this property, uh, this ninety point seven one acres. Uh, that's a era on the, I think, on the, uh, original, uh, document. It's a little over ninety acres total on this tract. Um, I also lived in Mr. Derek Pugh's district for twenty years. I lived in another P D D Cobblestone Park. So I'm very familiar with the Blythe Wood area and the real estate business and land development. I've also been a land developer myself and my company developed, uh, Woodlands Links. Um, we developed Silver Lake at Wildwood. Uh, we built a full service car wash out on Two Nutt Road, um, luxury car bath that was called, and that's called, uh, I'm not sure. It's been sold off. Um, I was involved in the development of Cobblestone Park with Ken Clubs and Resorts. Um, but we sold all the properties, uh, out there. Um, so, uh, the, we, I agree with, uh, Mr. Stillman, R S E would be, uh, an excellent rezoning. Um, and I don't disagree with the summation of the planning commission, uh, group there when they said, um, need to keep rezoning consistent with the comprehensive plan, which directs R S L D to be consistent with Baymont and Crickentree that Charles went through. And while our application is for R S E, um, the seller would not be disappointed if you, uh, pushed it to R S L D. Either one would be su- uh, sufficient, uh, him to sell this property and get it developed according to the plans and comprehensive plan of the county. And I thank you for your time and service. I served on the Blythe Wood Planning Commission for three years, so I know what you're going through.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Yonkey, we have.
We have. Thanks.
All right. Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff? Now that we've heard testimony? No questions? Do we have a motion?
I have a question for staff.
All right, uh, recognize.
Thank you. Just if I could try to word it right. So the, the concern here is R S L D versus R S E. And when it comes with correct?
Yes, if, if the request, um, was for R S L D, then we would have recommended approval based on the recommendations of the comprehensive plan.
As a denser zone.
Yes.
Correct?
Do you have any more questions?
I have a question.
Recognized.
After listening to the witnesses or the people that testified, and I heard them say that they would be satisfied with it being rezoned to the, um, classification that was just mentioned. Would it be appropriate to defer this case and allow there to be, um, you know, an adjustment wherein it would be within the comprehensive plan if it were changed to the other category that was just mentioned?
Assuming that's for staff.
That's going to be for you.
Um, I think in this particular case, I would say no, um, and Um, and, and again, I don't want to say, will it be appropriate or not? The conversation that we're having and that you're having now regarding, regarding RSE, RSLD is a conversation the staff has already had with the applicant. So the applicant was fully aware of which way we would recommend, um, in which zoning designation was received the support of staff based on the comprehensive plan. Um, so the choice was for RSE. Also, I would also, you know, just kind of, just kind of taking this point, I would also recommend that, um, you know, that the planning commission take the cases that are before them, the actual request itself. And based on your decision, the applicant can decide if they want to come back with another zoning designation, um, as opposed to in any way indicating what you may support in the future, because they may just re, they may, um, withdraw the request to come back in based on what they think that you're saying that you want to see.
I just have one question and I appreciate your comments. Um, so I know the applicant is not here and the applicant sent representatives, so I understand.
The applicant is here, Mr. Steelman.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So the representation that we heard a few minutes ago that the applicant would be satisfied either way, that's not correct?
No, what I'm not, that's not what I'm saying. I mean, I'm sure the applicant would be satisfied either way. What I'm just saying is that the applicant was, uh, we've had the discussion on regarding the two zoning designations that would probably fit for this area. Either the RSE, which is what the applicant is requesting, or the RSLD. And so, um, they were aware the staff would not support RSE, um, if that were to request, but we would support the RSLD, but they chose to go with the RSLD for the reasons that they stated to you previously.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
They went with RSE.
RSE, excuse me, RSE.
Thank you.
Question for staff, Mr. Vice.
Recognize.
Yes, uh, Mr. Price, uh, in the staff's conclusion, uh, if I'm reading this, reading this correctly, obviously, you said that you're recommending disapproval because it doesn't, uh, it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan. But if I move to your however paragraph, um, you're saying that it's, it's, it would be consistent with the density in a lot area of the established and proposed developments. Is that, looking on the map, is that speaking to the development to the northwest primarily?
Yes, sir. The two developments that, that I was, what the staff is referring to would be the Crickentree subdivision, which has the RSLD zoning designation, which is of course is supported by the comprehensive plan. But just letting you know that the lots, the, with the, the build out of the lots were a lot larger than what the minimum standards were for the RSLD. I think most of those lots are at least half an acre to maybe even an acre. However, if you go down to the Baymont subdivision, which has a rules zoning designation, um, again, which isn't in compliance with the comprehensive plan. However, um, the density, um, that's there, um, is in line with what the request is, is similar to what the request is before you.
And going back to the previous development, you said the lots actually turned out larger than what?
So the lots in purple, with the properties on RSLD, that's, that, that, that development is RSLD, which, um, the minimum lot size is 12,000 square feet, but you can look, the lot of the lots are a lot larger, you know, as, um, Mr. Smith is showing, um, just randomly picking one, that lot's almost an acre. Um, so they, they're overbuilt, um, but the ones that are in the Baymont subdivision, uh, were built under the open space provision, uh, under the current rules zoning designation. And the rules zoning designation is 1.32 units per acre, uh, versus the RSE, which is 2.2 units per acre. So it's more in line with that.
Got you.
Question for staff.
Recognize.
Do we hear anything from the schools on this one? They're being right across the street from Kelly Mill Middle.
Again, one of the, the schools are aware of all rezoning requests. They received that only the agenda page, but a lot of the, um, staff member for Richland School District Two also receives the full package. Uh, so they're aware of all rezoning requests that are taking place within that area. And just to, we did not receive any, um, response from them on, on the request.
I have one more question, sir. Following up on what you, on Mr. Yonkey's question there, do you ever receive any input from school, school districts on schools when you're entering a, owning?
Um, not, not too frequently. Um, every thought or something may come up and may have additional questions um, regarding the request, uh, but the schools are more, especially with District Two, um, they're, they really just want to know what's coming so they can start preparing for it. I don't know if they necessarily are totally against any developments taking place. I don't want to speak for them. Uh, wherever they, they're, the main purpose of them receiving that information regarding requests is so that they can be prepared, um, in the future, uh, and for future schools and, um, and withdrawing of district lines.
Uh, I'm going to piggyback on what Mr. Price said. Um, in my four years, they have only come to one meeting and they asked us some questions. Have any more discussion or any more questions? I'd entertain a motion for more discussion.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Yonkey.
I'll, I'll do it. Um, I would make a motion to approval. Uh, the question here is density, like what they're requesting, is it dense enough? I feel like this, this appropriate request, uh, smart growth for this area for the schools and for the traffic along this route.
I second the motion.
All right, we have a motion that has been presented and properly seconded for approval. Discussion? Discussion, let's take.
All right, so we have a motion for the approval of case 22 dash 037 MA from rural to RSE, which is residential single-family estate. And, and just for clarification, um, well, to correct, what you have before you is, it is 90.79 acres. Um, sorry, I misspoke on the 49 acres, but it's actually for 90.79 acres. But those in favor of that motion, um, Dennis?
Aye.
Sirks?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Durant?
Aye.
Mets?
Aye.
Fryerson? Johnson? Yonkey?
Aye.
This is seven to one.
Six to, yeah, yeah, seven to one, sir.
All right, moving on to case number three, 22 dash 038.
Okay, um, next item is case 22 dash 038 MA. The applicant is Drew Huddleston, the location's on Hart Scrabble Road. The applicant is requesting to rezonate 2.72 acres from rural to general commercial. Um, staff recommends disapproval of this request, uh, principally um, because it's not consistent with the objectives outlined in the comprehensive plan. Um, as the comprehensive plan recommends, non-residential development along main road corridors and within a contextually appropriate distance from a primary arterial. Uh, the subject site is not located along a main road corridor or within a distance of a primary arterial. However, uh, the request to rezonate would be compatible with the adjacent land uses and the current development pattern for commercial development in this area. In addition, the current, the current district zoning of rural is inconsistent with the objectives of the comprehensive plan, uh, designation for this area. And also just, you know, want to make sure we highlight some of these things. Um, so you'll take note that under the zoning history for the general area, um, under the first, um, the first, um, sentence, where it says the general commercial district parcel north of the site was rezoned under case 20 dash 032 MA. So that would be the parcel adjacent to it. All right. General commercial, I'm sorry, it was rezoned to general commercial. Um, it would, it was, I think it was on rural and was rezoned to general commercial.
Okay, gotcha.
All right, Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff?
I have a question.
Recognize.
Under the conclu- I'm understanding the conclusion correctly, the current RU is inconsistent and the recommend, or the requested requested is compatible, correct?
Yes, sir. Um, the rural zoning designation is not compatible with the current, uh, recommendations of the comprehensive plan for this area. Um, neither is the request, um, of general commercial consistent with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan for this area.
But, oh, it's compatible with current land uses, but not compatible with the comprehensive plan?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and.
And what's the path forward to get things, um?
I was about to, just, we, Mr. Taylor, as we go forward, once we go back to revisit our comprehensive plan, we'll, one of the things that what we will definitely do is take a look at requests that have come before the planning commission in which we've either recommended against it, um, and the planning commission has gone against our request, I mean, our, um, our recommendation, or there are cases where the planning, you know, the other way around also, that we'll go back and revisit those areas. Um, you know, that may be more appropriately identified with, with the comprehensive plan.
Question? Questions? Have anybody signed up for this? All right. Uh, go ahead. Uh, please state your name, address, who you're representing, and you'll have two minutes.
Thank you. Hopefully I won't take two minutes. My name is Nicole Scott. I'm with Nexon Pruitt in the Charleston office at 205 King Street, Charleston, South Carolina. Um, and I'm here representing the applicant. Um, in my used life, I was a, a county attorney, so I sympathize with staff's, um, uh, sympathize might not be the word, but I understand staff's, um, analysis of any zoning request, um, under the comp plan, which as you all have probably noted, was, um, is, is a little bit out of date at this point, um, because it's coming up on its 10-year, um, anniversary. Um, a couple of things that I just want to kind of emphasize is the however that Mr. Taylor pointed out, that these property, this property is surrounded, um, on three sides by general commercials, so the use is compatible. The, um, PD, um, residences behind the house, um, are this, these uses that are proposed would, would, uh, support and be beneficial, I believe, to, to those um, residences, or they're proposing a, um, drive-through restaurant and a dental office. So I think that, um, in the interest of shortening trips as much as possible, um, a commercial use adjacent to a, a neighborhood uses, um, in the best interest of the county. Um, the other thing I would like to point out is that this property was originally zoned RU in 1977, some 45 years ago. Um, so obviously the county and the uses in the county have changed extensively um, since then, and as pointed out, are no longer consistent with the comp plan. And we do believe while this use is inconsistent with the comp plan, it is more consistent with what is happening and more consistent with what, um, it's closer to consistency than the current zoning designation. I did take my two minutes, I apologize.
Thank you. Questions? Question to the staff? Or applicant? Nun, do I have a motion?
Mr. Vice Chair?
Recognize.
Make a motion to approve, uh, basis for this would be, um, as, has been discussed that, um, although it may not be consistent with the comprehensive plan, I think, um, it is more consistent with the adjacent uses and the, um, the current nature and patterns of the, uh, current uses in the surrounding area.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that has been put on the floor and properly seconded. Any discussion? No discussion, let's call for the vote.
Those in favor of the, um, motion for approval for case 22 dash 038 MA? Um, Taylor?
Aye.
Durant?
Aye.
Sirks?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Yonkey?
Aye.
Fryerson?
Aye.
Mets? Dennis?
Aye. All right. That motion passes for approval to County Council. Remember, uh, County Council will have the final say. All right, we're moving over to case number 22 dash 039 MA, case number four. Staff, can you let us know what we want to do?
All right, so we have, um, the next item is case 22 dash 039 MA. The applicant is Richland County, location is on Bluff Road and Longwood Road. The applicant is, is asking to rezonate 318.57, seven acres from lighting industrial, which is M1, the current zoning, to HI, which is heavy industrial. Um, staff recommends approval of this request, um, as is consistent, deemed to be consistent with the objectives of the 2015 comprehensive plan. As the plan encourages development of manufacturing, industrial, flex space and office uses that will minimally affect surrounding properties. The proposed zoning district would be consistent with the industrial zoning districts in the immediate area. Additionally, further guidance under the Economic Development Center corridor, future land use designation, notes industrial and, and business parks are the preferred land uses for these areas where the subject parcel is part of the Pineview Industrial Park. Uh, for these reasons, staff recommends approval.
All right, do we have any questions for staff?
Vice, one question for staff.
Recognize.
Yeah, this, this is land owned by the county.
Yes.
Okay.
Now.
Question?
Recognize.
So I'll understand for future, um, so on page 30, page 30, the area marked as the site. And on page 25, the corresponding tax map numbers reside, are they sectioned off? Or can you have more than one tax map number in the, the site area? Cause I count, I thought I counted nine tax map numbers on page 25. Should I see nine parcels on, um, on page 30, or could some of the tax map numbers be combined within it, or am I counting wrong?
I'm just counting along with you, just to confirm here. Should be, um, in nine parcels there, um. Can get twenty two.
Just for, so there should be nine separate parcels. There may be, I just, I may have miscounted, but I just wanted to be sure.
There are nine separate parcels, yes.
Okay, and then also. Uh, the little triangular shape within it, is that a different zone designation? Because most of it appears to be. Um. What is it?
Yeah, yes, sir. Okay, well, and we'll clarify that, um, as we go forward to the point to county council. But the kind of gray areas, I believe that you're referencing in the little triangle piece, those actually should be M one, I think it was, um. They were formerly a part of a, a, um. A parcel that was subject to a rezoning to heavy industrial, um, it should have been subdivided from, but I think the tax map numbers just carried over. But those should actually be zoned M one.
More questions for staff?
Mr. Vice Chair. Uh, question for staff. Um. Uh, maybe I'm just not seeing the, the last one, I'm only. Counting. Eight on. Eight parcels on them. App on page twenty.
Um. Yeah, so counting the tax map numbers that are on page, that on your agenda page. Um. There are only eight, there are only eight parcels. So there's eighteen nine hundred dash oh two twenty two, there's one. Sixteen one hundred oh three, there's seventeen, which is two. Sixteen one hundred oh three oh five, three, sixteen one hundred. Oh, two, oh, three, four, sixteen two hundred oh three, oh, two, five, sixteen one hundred oh two, there's twenty two. Six, six, eighteen nine hundred oh one oh one, seven, and sixteen one hundred oh two oh seven, which would be eight.
Staff, I got a question for you. So on those tax map numbers, which one didn't belong on here? If there's nine on here, which one does not belong?
I'm sorry, there, there are eight, there, there should be eight, as I was counting the ones, but so they all belong. Well, I think if you look at the triangular piece, and if you look at what Mr. Um, Smith is kind of, kind of pointing to those two pieces, if you know my, those two pieces. Actually should be M one, um, they're showing up because I've been able to carry over when they were formally part of the parcel across the street, don't that rezonate request?
Oh, okay, I'm following now, gotcha.
And, and again, that would be corrected prior to this going before council for the zoning public hearing.
All right, do we have any more questions for staff? All right, no questions, let's, um. Do we have anybody signed up?
I'm sorry for this lab rook, you see? Eighty-three fifty old Percival Road, that's must be for a different case.
That was the person that.
Kind of on the wrong sheet, that's fine, okay.
Um.
And we have a Stuart. White. There we go.
Just want to remind you, please state your name, address, and then, um. You have two minutes.
Thank you to commission for allowing me to speak. My name's Stuart White. I live at forty-eight forty-five Carter Hill Drive, Columbia, two nine two oh six. Um, my main concern here, and this just kind of hit my radar in the last couple of days. Um, but my main concern is, is the, the erosion of. The ecosystem services that are, that are provided through properties like this. When we move to a high density type of, uh, or a high, um, uh, industrial use type of use of the property, more impermeable surfaces, more runoff into our watersheds. And, you know, as you can see from, uh, from your map that shows the wetlands and, and, uh, waters, uh, of that particular piece of. Uh, pieces of property that several different parcels contain wetlands, uh, Mill Creek runs through that, which feeds to the Congry River. Uh, Mill Creek, uh, is already a very challenged, uh, uh, stream as it is. And, you know, we're just seeing more and more industrial runoff into these, into these areas. Those ecosystem services account for, uh, you know, sustaining of drinkable water sources downstream and surface water. Uh, and, and the quality of, of river and, uh, tourism, uh, and, and the quality of, of wildlife and fisheries. And, uh, and in addition to that, you also have to consider when these lands can't absorb. Large amounts of water like they do now, when they're paved over and they're adding to the, the overflow of, of these streams. And pollutants into it, you're also affecting your, your residents downstream with possibly exacerbating flood situations. Thank you.
Thank you. Have anybody else signed up? All right. Do we have any more questions for staff?
This was the last one question.
Recognize.
Uh, staff, following up on the speaker's point, has there been any kind of environmental impact study or whatever regarding the, the future uses of this property, should it? If it's, uh.
Um, no, sir, but, n- no, sir, um, but those are things that. You know, we will look at during the development of the site, uh, that's why we do a review. Of, um. We know we'll do a review of all the site plans that are submitted. Um, and also looking, we're in the working with D hack also. To ensure that there shouldn't be any dam, we, uh, we hope not to have any damage to. You know, to the environmental, sensitive environmental areas, um, that are either adjacent to or located along the same parcel as the development.
All right, do we have any other questions for staff? If not, I would entertain a motion.
We should do a best, uh.
All right, we have a motion on the floor for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion has been properly seconded. Discussion. Like there's no discussion, let's go ahead and call for the vote.
We have a emotion for, excuse, we have a motion for approval of case twenty two dash zero three nine M A. Um, M one light industrial to H I, which is heavy industrial. Um, those in favor? Mets. Sirks.
Hi.
Frierson. Taylor.
Hi.
Johnson. Dennis.
Hi.
Durant.
Hi.
Yonki.
Hi.
All right. That motion passes, uh, that's all the map amendments we have, so moving on. We have the. Chairman's report. Um. The only thing I have on the chairman's report is, uh, I know we're still working on minutes, um, there's some still minutes that are missing. Uh, I'm gonna continue to work with staff. To get those missing minutes done. I, I know I wanted them done personally, and, uh, some council members want them done before the. Beginning of the new year, don't look like we made it to that, however, I'm gonna. Keep at it, and we will get them done as soon as possible. Other than that. There's nothing that I have on the, for the chairman's report. So that would move over to the planning director's report.
Yeah. Only thing we have is just, if you notice on page thirty-three of your agenda. The, um, report of council from the November zoning public hearing.
Price. Um. On. That report from council, everything went well on that, from what I remember seeing online, did they have any questions?
Um, no, no, sir.
All right, so moving on, other items for discussion. We, I had. Watched the county council's, um, last meeting, and they talked about, uh, short term rentals, so I wanted it placed on here so it gets on our radar. Um, Councilman Malinowski asked us to look at creating an ordinance that restricts short term rentals to properties in the general commercial zoning categories only. Um, and in that it was penalties for violations should be included, um, that was on the November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two county council meeting. Um.
Yes.
Hold on, let me, um, I'm not looking for any action on this, I just wanted this to be brought in front of everybody, and then I wanted to, uh. Kind of pave a way forward, and I have somebody here. That can possibly shed some light on that, and, um, but I, I don't think that the. Commission should move forward on this. From looking at it from a vice chair, because I think there's a lot of other things that is going along with this that we'll have to see. Um, and I imagine Mr. Price is gonna fill us in.
Yes, oh, okay, so, um, the original motion that was, that was on the agenda was, as you stated. Um, dealt with specifically with the general commercial zoning designation. However, during discussion from the, from Councilman Malinowski, would he really, is, he's requested of, um. I guess for staff, through working with the planning commission, is to just try to come up with some rules and regulations for short term, short term rentals. So regardless of the zoning designation, just to come up with some rules. Um, one of the things staff will be working on, uh, I guess going into your February meeting is. You know, we'll do some research and try to come up with some language. Um, that will be, uh, appropriate for any type of ordinance that we may propose, um, for, um, short term rentals. Um, and then presented to the planning commission, um, where we'll kind of determine whoever may be the chair, vice chair. About potentially having a work session to discuss those, or we can just take it up at the regular scheduled meeting. Um, but that is something staff will be working on, um, to bring before the planning commission, um, for your discussion and ultimately for your action.
Mr. Or, and that's the only reason why I wanted it placed on here, so you guys know about it, because there's gonna be, there's a lot of stuff out there for you guys to research and look up. Um, and good luck with it, so if we have a motion to do anything like to get opinions or anything like that, that can be made, but, uh. This is not ready to make a motion per kind of what, uh, Mr. Price was talking about, but if we want to have staff do anything for us. At this time would be the appropriate time to do that, but it looks like they also have directions from county council to get us that, so. Just wanted to be aware.
Thanks, yeah. Mr. Vice Chair.
Recognize.
Uh, just a question for staff, uh, can you define short term rentals for me?
Question, that's probably something we would definitely look to make sure it's in our code, but typically, um, for short term rentals, it's more transient use of. Of a parcel property, um, in which, you know, no one's establishing a, you know, legal residence on the property or just living there. Some more self, uh, transit use of residential property.
Yeah, recognize.
Thank you, sir, uh, such as Airbnb, basically. Uh, but what I was gonna state is that, uh, Mr. Malinowski, it's my understanding that he intends to amend. His motion, so, uh, thank you understands that there needs to be some changes, so I believe he intends to amend it.
Uh, and the only reason why I wanted this up here, and I want the public to be. Very aware and all the commissioners be aware, very aware, it was brought up, and I wanted us to have it put in front of us, not to. Rule with iron fist and make a decision right now, I want us to think about it in the future, because. This is our last meeting until February, so this gives homework. Kind of the only reason why I wanted it brought up, but other than that, that's all I have on it. Anybody else have anything that, or we're just, or we're fine with waiting till the next meeting to take it up? It was just for discussion, so we don't even have to take anything, so if we don't have anything, then we can move on to other items of discussion with action on ten A. All right, so we have the election of officers, um. Election of officers. We do in the December now, so that beginning of the year, we can have a new chairman, vice chair, and secretary, and this also gives the time. For the newly elected chair, vice chair, or, and however we decide to do secretary, chance to. Really talk with the chair and vice chair and see kind of how they went forward, and also give them time to talk to staff to. Come up with a new way of business, because not everybody runs things the same, um. Mr. Branham ran it one way, I think I'm a little more lax with my way of doing things when I do it, and, uh, everybody else will go from there. So with the election of officers. I'm going to open up the floor for, um, any nominations for chair.
I nominate Mr. Yonki for chair.
Second emotion.
All right, so we have a nomination for Mr. Yonki. Now, this is a little bit different than motions, I'm gonna have, since we have one. Person that's already there, I'm gonna have to call for this three times according to Roberts rules, all right? Do I have any nominations for chair? Do I have any nominations for chair?
Addition to my nomination, Mr. Yonki, or do I need to make that again?
Uh, uh, if, if you've already recommended them, I just have to call it for three times, make sure we have no other. Do I have any? Recommendations for chair? All right, that was three, um, with none other than Mr. Yonki, we just need to take a vote.
All right, those in favor of Christopher Yonki for chair for. Planning of the planning commission for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three, um, year. Uh, those in favor, Dennis?
Hi.
Yonki?
Hi, makes sense.
Johnson.
Hi, I'm sorry.
Frierson.
Hi.
Mets. Durant.
Hi.
Taylor.
Hi.
Sirks.
Hi.
All right, congratulations, Mr. Yonki, on being elected the twenty twenty-three, um, chair.
Everyone?
All right, moving on, we're gonna have a vice chair nominations, I'm opening up the floor for vice chair. Do I have any nominations?
I nominate Ms. Frierson.
Second.
All right, we have a nomination for Mrs. Frierson. Miss, uh, sorry, I, Miss Frierson, all right, so I'm gonna have to call three more times to see if we have any other. The floor is open for nomination for vice chair. Do I have any nominations for vice chair? Do I have any nominations for vice chair? There's no more. We have Ms. Fryerson. And let's call for the vote.
All right. Those in favor of Beverly Fryerson for vice chair? Uh, Dennis?
Hi.
Yonki?
Hi.
Johnson?
Hi.
Fryerson? Mets?
Hi.
Durant?
Hi.
Taylor?
Hi.
Sirks?
Hi.
All right. Congratulations, Ms. Fry.
Thank you all so much.
All right. And then that gets us down to the last thing, secretary. So, um, there's two ways of doing this. Uh, we can either nominate a secretary or we can nominate staff. In the past, staff has always won the secretary. There. The floor is open for secretary.
Who raises it from excellent practice, I nominate staff.
I'll be that. We have Steph nominated. And with that seconded, all right. So we'll make another call. Floor is still open for secretary? Do I have any nominations for secretary? Do I have any nominations for secretary? All right. We have staff that has been nominated. No other nominations were presented. Let's call for the vote.
So many staff can't decline, right?
That is correct.
Those in favor of staff for secretary, um, Branham? Ask you, whoa, sorry, Dennis?
Hi.
Yonki?
Hi.
Johnson? Fryerson? Mets? Durant?
Hi.
Taylor?
Hi.
Sirks?
Hi.
All right. So we have our new officers elected for the twenty twenty-three, um, calendar year. Uh, moving on. Adoption of the twenty twenty-three calendar. That's towards the end of the, uh, packet on page thirty-five. Like I said, towards the end. It is getting near. After you have anything to present for this, I mean, I, I know we have some new members.
Just, no, sir. Um, just to let you know that one of the things that we, we, when we, when we're preparing the, the calendar for the, um, following year, we take into account, um, elections. Um, the election in November, we take into account holidays. Um, and we take into the availability of chambers also, um, in determining which days are, uh, that are more suitable for us to have our meetings and so we, and we do try to keep it on, along the lines of the first Monday of each month. Uh, so what you have before you is, is, um, those dates, that's what we took into consideration in determining.
All right. Is there any discussion, uh, on this matter from the council or from the commission?
Yes, Steph. The calendar in reverse here, December of next year. I already know I'll be out of town on that date. I was wondering if we could look at December eleventh. That's okay. Be the following Monday? Question from the
I'm impressed that you know what you'll be doing a year from now.
That's my birthday. I'm planning a trip.
I, I don't have any say of that because I mean, I still have to reapply if I decide to stay on, uh, past September. So, um, that's past the September timeframe for me to make any make anything. So I'm just gonna go with whatever y'all decide.
Yeah. The only thing I'll point out, um, is that more than likely it's going to fall within a few days before the zoning public hearing. Um, which they more than likely will follow suit as they have over the last few years. And we'll probably have it on the fourteenth, which should, you know, of course be a couple of days before, um, and what, and I only bring that up because sometimes that was gonna, regardless of whether it's the four for the fourteenth, excuse me, the four for the eleven. The applicant will still have to appear before council if they were going to defer or, um, or maybe in some cases even as far withdrawal. Um, but it does kind of shorten that time period in what they can just determine what, how they want to petition council for their request.
Mr. Chair-elect, if you're gonna be cruising or whatever on December the fourth, I'd be happy to preside for you on the fourth as your vice chair.
Thank you. I'm happy that we're planning ahead.
What did you say? I didn't hear. I was laughing too much.
I agree with you. Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
All right. So I mean, we're, we're looking at this going forward. I will take a motion if there's no other discussion on this.
This will be for the calendar as presented?
It, it would be, or if somebody wants to do something, I mean.
I'll make a motion to approve the calendar as presented.
Do I have a second? It's been moved and properly seconded.
Those in favor of the adoption of the twenty twenty-three planning commission calendar? Um, Dennis?
Hi.
Yonki?
Hi.
Johnson?
Right.
Fryerson? Mets? Durant?
Hi.
Taylor? Sirks?
Hi.
Passes. Um, next we have on here the planning commission rules of procedure.
Yeah. Again, I believe that your request, um, vice chair, um, Dennis, you asked that we include it in the package, uh, which we did, um, you know, over the years, you know, my, uh, uh, over the years, we've talked about making, you know, revisiting those things and making some potential changes if need be. Um, you know, we, ye- years ago, we proposed some changes, but we never acted on those. Um, so you know, uh, you, you, whichever direction y'all choose to go, but I believe if you have those now, it'll give you a good chance to review those. And as we come back into the new year, we can take this up of any potential changes that y'all may see, um, or recommend.
So I'd ask for this to be on there and because in the past, um, there's been things in here that people want to change and not. So basically this is just a way forward for the new year and considering we had talked about some things like Mr. Price said, but then it got drowned out because of the LDC. This is just a way forward for you guys to look and see if there's any way to improve the rules for the commission in the future. I'm not saying you have to change it. But it's, I'm a firm believer in always looking at your rules and procedures, um, to see if it can be better because laws and things do change and things happen and you can learn from past things that can make it better in the future. So that's all I'm asking. Other than that, I don't have anything on that. Do I have anything for the commission rules and procedures upfront? Any discussion? All right. If not, um, right before adjournment, I just got a quick thing to say to everybody. Uh, thank you for allowing me to serve as your vice chair for this year. It really helped me grow, um, in the world of running these things. Um, there's many different ways of running them and, uh, I will gladly say that Henry M. Robert, the third, has given me a lot of reading and for the new chair and vice chair, good luck because there are a lot of things in there that you think you are going the right way. And then there's a statement or something that points you in another direction and then you gotta consult. Um, so thank you for allowing me and, uh, look forward to serving on the new chair and vice chair. All right. That's all I had. Does anybody else have anything?
Just to cheer.
Mr. Price?
Two things I wanna go back to the minutes for Jim. Uh, we just asked that, we just defer that, uh, since we have a few more for the rest of the year and from talking to our transcripts in this, uh, we expect to have all of the minutes caught up by the February meeting. So I'll see some of you in January. Um, some of you in your well-lit driveways. But, um, uh, we'll have that to you so that we hopefully by the time, um, the end of our February meeting that we will have all of our minutes online for the public, at least from twenty seventeen up to twenty twenty-two.
All right. So that was for that June sixth meeting. I just need a motion to, um, defer the June sixth approval of minutes.
Vice Chair? I'll make a motion to defer the approval of the minutes for June sixth, twenty twenty-two.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second? And it's been properly seconded. Take a quick vote.
Okay. Uh, those in favor? Dennis?
Hi.
Yonki?
Hi.
Johnson? Fryerson?
Hi.
Mets? Durant?
Hi.
Taylor? Sirks?
Hi.
Yeah.
All right.
Just get, and Mr. Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, um, one other thing, looking at the, the minutes that are left while we do have primarily, um, twenty twenty-two, there may be a couple left from twenty twenty-one. Uh, so the twenty-one may be addressed also, but I just, I guess I wanted to take an opportunity because, um, while we have council here, um, because I know this question comes up a good bit, not only with the planning commission, but we've had other boards to regarding approval of minutes when you were not necessarily there at the meeting. Um, so I was just asked that he be allowed to speak on that unto the commission.
I can ask, sir.
Uh, yes, regarding approval of minutes, uh, it is not a requirement that you have, you were a part of the meeting of, as a current member, uh, you have the obligation to approve the minutes. And if there's a reason why you don't think you should approve them, you can, you know, specifically speak to what you think is not appropriate or was, is wrong in the minutes. But, uh, whether you are here or not here, a part of the meeting or a part of the commission at that time, uh, part of the duties of commissioners are to approve minutes from previous meetings. So, uh, if you were not at that particular meeting, or even if you were not a member of the co- commission at that time, uh, approval of minutes is still, you know, part of the duties.
Are you having questions?
Yeah. One question with vice. I, I know in, um, past meetings when we're asked to approve them and the three new commissioners weren't there, and I remember we generally abstained. Is there anything that needs to be done to go back and correct that? As you were saying that we were supposed to vote on the minutes.
Right. I don't think that you necessarily have to go back to try to correct from the previous meetings, but just to have the understanding that you do, um, as commissioners, uh, that's, that's part of the duties to approve minutes. Uh, if you look in them and see that, okay, something is incorrect, then you can point that out, but otherwise, yes, the, the program.
Recognize, Michelle?
Mr. Vice Chair, Counselor, um, I, I understand it's part of our duties to do that, but, um, not necessarily being tracing the idea of opining to something that I have no knowledge of. So if it's a matter of receiving it for information, I'm fine to receive it for information.
Uh, you're not opining anything. You're just approving, uh, what has been presented, uh, as far as the, either the transcripts or the notes from the previous meetings. So you're not saying you agree or disagree with anything. You're just approving those minutes from the previous meetings. Uh, and the thing about it is that whether the commission or council, a lot of times there can be a vast change and you may not even have a quorum to be able to prove minutes. You would never be able to prove minutes or say that you had a meeting and half of you weren't here, but in the next meeting, there's only one person, you have a quorum, but there's only one person that was at the last meeting would never be able to approve meetings. I mean, approve minutes. So that's the thing is that you, you are not required to have been at that particular meeting, uh, in order to approve them. You just approve what has been presented if it, to your knowledge, is accurate. Or you don't see something that's, uh, clearly inaccurate.
Basically, we're just making sure that the general nature of those minutes look correct as a setting as you would be on a commission. You would look down through it and say, that looks correct. Even if you wasn't there, you don't agree with how the votes went. You're just saying they look like they procedurally did everything and everything's in line, um, barring, even if you don't know what the discussion is.
Correct.
Okay. Questions?
Out anything, Ms. Mike?
Anything.
All right. I just have one question. What happens to the vacant, uh, spot on the commission now?
Or?
Didn't Mr. Branham resign?
So we will, I, I imagine there's people that supplied as the same thing you went through. And I'm pretty sure Mr. Price can talk to us a little bit more, maybe if they're looking at doing something sooner or later.
No. Um, so Mr. Branham did submit his resignation, um, from the planning commission and that was sent to our clerk of council. Um, so they, she, the clerk of council would notify our rules and appointments committee. Uh, they would do the advertisements for the planning commission slot and they would do the interviews. This business, Dennis was just stating, do the interviews and someone will be appointed to his position. Now, when that takes place, I'm not sure if, um, that's gonna take, I don't know if the rules and appointment committee will have adequate time to, to, um, advertise, interview and appoint, um, because council typically doesn't meet for, meet in January. Um, so more than likely, uh, new person will come in, probably March. At the earlys. Do you know of anybody? Um, please ask them to apply.
Other questions? All right. So we're looking at this packet right here. It is four forty-six PM. Nothing else. Um, I would love to entertain a motion for adjournment.
Ju- just a reminder to everyone, um, when meeting is in, give us a chance to turn everything off first. Um, their whole recording is off, you know, before we really are getting to our relaxed period.
All right. So just a quick raise of hands?
All right. Those in favor?
They have adjournment? All right. Not in favor?